Okay. All right, good evening, everyone. Today is Thursday, November sixteenth. It is six thirty PM. This is the Olentangie Local Schools Board of Education. This is a regular meeting. I will call the meeting to order. Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Lester.
Here.
Dr. Dabberco.
Here.
Dr. Wise.
Here.
Dr. Wallack.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here. Please stand and join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
So moved.
A second, please.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the agenda? All right, seeing none, please call the roll. Mr. Jenkins.
Just a minute. That wasn't marked as an action item, was it? Lester Wise, is it?
Yep.
Yep.
It's his first day.
That's fine. Dr. Dabberco.
Yes.
Dr. Wise.
Yes.
Dr. Wallack.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Lester.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move right into the Board President's Report. First up, I just want to turn it over to Ms. Wallack. She want a few comments to make?
Thank you. So, just want to say, I always look forward to this week and attending the Ohio School Board Association's annual Capitol Conference. One of the many highlights is seeing the showcases of student work and student performances. And as many or all of you know, the conference was canceled early due to the tragic accident in Licking County involving a charter bus filled with band students who were on their way to perform for us. My hometown is very close to the school districts impacted. Three students, three chaperones, two of which were teachers, lost their lives on Tuesday. Others were and continue to be hospitalized with a number of injuries. The fast action by the charter bus driver absolutely saved many, many lives. I would like to take a moment of silence to honor those that we lost and reflect on how precious and fragile life is to show gratitude to the first responders, the counselors, and other heroes who stepped in, and to show the students, families, educators, and bus drivers and all affected that their pain is felt across the state and that we are all here in solidarity to offer our condolences and support.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's a very well put in a very horrible, horrible situation, so. I guess turning to other, other news or other, other elements of the President's Report. You know, we can go, yesterday, we had the election. I just want to spend a minute to, to recognize all of the candidates that ran. You know, one thing that I know, it takes courage to put your name out there. It takes courage to, to run a race, no matter what the outcome. So I appreciate all of the candidates, all the work that they put in, and the volunteers are recognized and show some respect for that as well. Lizette is here, and we look forward to welcoming her on the board in January. It's a tough time to post-election until January to kind of watch, but look forward to the future board, and then we'll have a chance to honor Ms. Wise next meeting, on her last meeting, so we appreciate your, your service as well. So, in the last piece, I know there's some legislation circulating in the Ohio State House that we're going to keep track of around educational standards and what should and shouldn't be in the classroom that we'll keep a close eye on and see how it potentially impacts Olentangie, but we'll, as usual, we do between Mr. Meyer, Mr. Jenkins. We'll do a great job of updating, keeping the community updated on how that's working its way through the system. With that, I'll ask any other board members for comments? All right. Let's go to our first presentation item. Dr. Jennifer Alward, did I say that correctly? Okay, from Oasis, and Ms. Carol Chapman, the Oasis Outreach Coordinator.
Hello, everyone. My name is Carol Chapman, and I want to start by thanking everyone here for the privilege of letting us share everything we do at Oasis. This is year twenty-four for me within the district, and the last four years that I have been at Oasis have brought about some of the biggest blessings in my life. So, without further ado, I've always wanted to say that. I just, it wasn't even on the paper, I just had to say it. Let me introduce you to one of our amazing students, Izzy Watkins. She has attended Oasis since her junior year and is going to lead our slideshow presentation.
Hi, my name's Isabella Watkins. I'm a senior at Oasis. And now, oops, I'll be showing you the history of Oasis then and now. For over thirteen years, Dr. Jen has served Oasis. Over thirteen years, Oasis has served hundreds of students, two students in two thousand ten, forty-four students in May two thousand eleven, and two, two hundred and twenty-four students in the year, the school year, twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three. We average about eighty seniors per year, per school year. Oasis serves sixth through twelfth grade for a wide variety of reasons. Any student who benefits from a non-traditional school setting will find a sense of belonging at Oasis. Today, we have five high school students in one middle school classroom. Eighty percent of students attending in person and twenty percent work virtually from home. Those who work virtually from home are supported by a mentor who checks in with them regularly and helps them navigate most their, most their successful path on an individual basis. In the spirit of gratitude, we incorporate lots of outreach work into the art classes at Oasis. Last week was Veterans Day, so the students in art class have made over one hundred star, wooden stars, wooden and, no, wooden stars to honor the over one hundred veterans. Each veteran's names was written and displayed on a white star in recognition of their service. We demonstrate our compassion by donating to the faith mission homeless shelter. Students brought in a wide variety of hygiene products such as shampoo, conditioner, toothpaste, and so much more. We donated a total of eight grocery bags full of essential items to help those in need. Every year in the fall, Oasis creates over one hundred fall cards for children at the Nationwide's, Nationwide Children's Hospital to bring smiles over the kids' face while they stay, while they have their stay at the hospital. Each week, Oasis volunteers at Heritage Elementary School for their partnership. The staff members at Heritage have been amazing mentors for the Oasis students over the many years, and likewise for the, for the Heritage, for the Oasis students to the Heritage students. There is a great sense of purpose and belonging ship in this partnership. And as you can see here, the Oasis students are helping out the Heritage students. And behind the scenes, too. And for the respective time that is given, here are some more, more projects that Oasis has made and some upcoming projects. We are creating dog chew toys and sewing blankets for nonprofit organizations. And now, we will be having McKenna share her personal story at Oasis.
Hello, my name is McKenna. I've been attending Oasis since my freshman year, and I will graduate in May. For me, attending Oasis has changed my high school experience for the better. One of the main reasons is that it's much smaller than other high schools, and I have a lot of opportunities to work with teachers one-on-one and do volunteer work. The smaller environment has also made it easier for me to connect with others. Because of this, I've grown both academically and socially. And I would like to thank Dr. Jen for creating Oasis. We will not take questions.
It's more of a comment. I remember thirteen years ago when you first started Oasis at the pole barn by Shanahan.
Yes.
We're back there.
We liked it, though.
Yeah, we do.
You know, it started as more of a cost-effective delivery model, but like, as you see, it's grown to much, much more, right? In terms of the experience the kids can have and the impact it can have in their lives, so I think it's fabulous work, and you named it Oasis for a purpose, right? It's a very special place, and so I think it's fantastic. Thank you for sharing your stories tonight, so.
So, I had a chance to meet Ms. Chapman and Izzy at the State of the Schools address last year. Was it last year, this year? It's been, it's, this year has sort of flown by. And I was blown away then, just hearing you. You did an amazing job, both of you, Izzy and McKenna. I know you were a little bit nervous. You sounded like a professional public speaker to me, so I'm so appreciative that you came and shared everything that you've done and your stories and, and how meaningful it has been to you. With all of this work, right, you, you are doing so much good in the community. What, what has been the most enjoyable part for you? What, what have you, what is the thing that has just been the most impactful for you?
What's been the most enjoyable part of it? I think it's just that the teachers care so much about you. You get to know them on a personal experience, and they're always there to help you, even if it's mental, emotional, physical. It doesn't matter what it is. They will always be there to help you. And that's good, knowing that, that teachers care about you and that there's always going to be somebody there for you, even if it's not your own family. It's somebody else from school.
Do they make you wear that, do they make you wear that hairnet every day?
Izzy didn't want that slide. You forced it because it was good.
Well, you, you made your teachers cry. I want you to know that. Well, well, thank you so much. And McKenna, too, the same question to you. What is, what has been, what has been the most enjoyable part for you?
The most enjoyable part for me being at Oasis is that it helps a lot with my anxiety because I struggle to be in large crowds of people, and so I don't have to be at those big high schools where I can't focus, and I'm focused on where eyes are instead of my paper.
So, if I could ask one more question. So, of, of these things that are, you know, that have been helpful for you all as, as you've gone through this, is there something that you think that we could do at other schools to help, you know, to help make sort of that positive feeling for other people?
I think, oh, I think that what, like, the main high schools could do differently is, I think the main high school students could probably, like, I'm trying to word it right, to not sound rude, because I lo, I love my main high school. It's Berlin. I love Berlin so much. Probably to not pit so much kids in one room, and for the kids that do fail, that maybe to check on them more, and when you see that they're struggling, don't keep pushing schoolwork onto them. That just gives them more stress, and it goes in a cycle. Then they fail the whole year. And that's how a lot of kids end up at Oasis, because they fail, and they get in this cycle in the loop that they don't know what they're going to do anymore. They think, well, that's my life. I'm not going to get in college anymore. I thought I wasn't, not going to get in college my sophomore year because I had straight F's because I was doing really bad mentally. But I came to Oasis, I got everything. I got all my credits in my junior year, and now I'm a senior that has one class left, and I'm so close to graduating. And I think if the teachers probably paid more close attention, I probably would have not felt like that the whole time I was doing my schoolwork.
It, it's tough, and as you, you know, when a lot of us were in school, there was sort of a one-size-fits-all model, right? And, and I think as we've learned and as we've grown, we're starting to understand, and we have a great team that really works at this, right? And it's tough, because it's, it's in a district our size, trying to, to make sure that you have everything that you need for everyone is tough. But I think, you know, what you're saying is, is right, that we've got to make sure that we're there for every student, that we have that, those supports in place. So, thank you for highlighting it. I'm glad that you, you found these supports, and, you know, let's continue. We, obviously, we're, we're working at this every day. We're, we're always trying to be the best that we can for every student. But I think that this is a, a really great example of finding those ways to provide those supports. So, thank you for, for sharing it. Thank you for your thoughts, and we'll keep working.
And if I may, thank you for the vulnerability and sharing so honestly and authentically with us. I know you were wanting to be very cautious and choose your words carefully, but I appreciate the honesty and I, everything that you said. So, thank you for putting yourself out there and sharing honestly with us.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for being here.
I have, Mr. Mr. O'Brien, just, just before they leave, just want to thank Dr. Alward. Steve Sisko also is a teacher at Oasis. He's here. Mrs. Chapman, thank you for your incredible work for our students at Oasis, year over year. They do tremendous work on a daily basis, so it's extremely rewarding when we get to visit, and then obviously, hearing stories. So, McKenna, great job. Izzy, I have an Izzy at home, too. You guys did a phenomenal job, so, you know, congratulations to both of you for being here, for presenting. You make us extremely proud.
Thank you for having us.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, yes, thank you so much.
All right, Mr. Lucas, it's a little tough to follow. We've got Olentangie High School baseball turf.
So, I am, I'm a five oh four coordinator intervention specialist at the high school, and I work with Jen a lot. And to hear her students, I mean, that's why you teach, right there, and it was really cool. So, yeah, you're right. It's hard to follow, follow that. But good evening. My name's Ryan Lucas. I'm the head baseball coach at Olentangie High School. But more importantly, I'm an intervention specialist and a five oh four coordinator at the school at OHS, and work with eighty-plus students and families and, and kids, so it's, it's a lot of fun, and I really, really love my job. And I think it's important that you guys hear that for me. I'm a teacher, I'm a coach, but I'm also a father, and, and I have a kid who's a fifth grader in the district, and I absolutely love living in Olentangie. It, it is phenomenal, and, you know, sometimes, all of us at higher levels or whatever, you don't necessarily hear those things on a consistent basis, and I think it's important you hear that. So, thank you guys for your time and everything you guys do for us in the community. So, thank you. I also, and I'll get to the baseball presentation here in a second, but since I have this platform, I wanted to, just ten, fifteen seconds, just give a huge thank you to our building leadership administrator, Mr. Smith, and, and what he's done in the past month and a month and a half to be a great presence of calm and, and just a sounding board and just a support system for staff and students. His leadership has just been excellent. This is my twelfth year at the school, and just, I, I can't appreciate, I can't tell you how much I appreciate his time and his effort over the last month, so, Mr. Smith, thank you for everything you do.
We'll settle up after.
I already gave him a hoodie and everything, so he's good. So, with that, on behalf of our boosters, our players and our parents, I just want to present our turf project that we've been working on. And my goal tonight really is, is simply just to give you guys a vision of what we're, we're seeing and what we want to do, but then also a plan of our execution and how we're going to implement this and execute the project. So, this process actually has been a couple months, and I want to thank Mr. Gordon for his leadership and his guidance. You know, this is a whole new world for, for me. I'm a coach and a teacher. So, going through this, you learn a lot of things, and sometimes you're maybe not as organized or whatever at the beginning as you want to be, but through his guidance and his leadership, he's really helped not only myself, but our, our boosters and our program get to where we want to get to, and, and we feel where we are at right now is in a really good place, and we feel like we're in a really good place to move forward with this project. So, what we've completed in the last two months is we have secured a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan, and it's a five-year loan, but then after that five years, we can get back with the bank and we can do an additional five years if we have to. I'm going to present in a couple slides from now a ten-year plan that we have to pay everything back, but our boosters are aggressively wanting to pay this off in five years. So, that's why we have just the initial five-year loan, but our goal is to pay it off in five, but we do have a ten-year loan, or a ten-year plan. We've been working with AstroTurf, who provided us with the renderings and the drawings, the specs, and all that stuff. Mr. Gordon and his team have the documents on file. The district has the documents on file. We've also been working with Levance Construction, who has done work in our district before, so they worked with fields at Olentangie Orange High School, and then also at Liberty High School, and that's how we got connected with them, just because of my relationship with those people. We were able to, to meet with them and, and go that route. And then we presented to the facility committee and were approved, and was approved in early October. The plan for our project is actually going to start as soon as our season's over, at the end of May. We were going to, we were trying to do this before the winter hit and get it in there for the spring season, but because of weather, and actually, the construction company, they're so far behind, there's a little bit of delay, so they pushed our project back. So, they wouldn't even be able to get out till January, maybe February, to skin the, the field, and we didn't want to take that chance of, it has to be forty degrees or, or higher to put the turf down, and these are all the things you learn when you're in these meetings. And I, we didn't want to take a chance on that for our, for our kids, because we got to be able to practice in March and get prepared for our season, and if we didn't have a, a field in March, we wouldn't be ready to go for our season, and, and more importantly, I was thinking about our seniors. So, we're pushing it back. It's going to be as soon as the season's over. Now, we, we have a, a pretty busy field rental plan or calendar that we've always had, but especially with the turf. So, we're going to see what the timing looks like. Right now, with Levance and AstroTurf, it's directly after our season, so like, late May, early June. There is a scenario where we, if we don't want to affect fundraising with our field rentals that we currently have secured, we may push it to September, but we'll communicate that and update Mr. Gordon and his team with that information.
So, how, how long would the field be down?
Just one, one to two weeks, they said. So, it just depends on, really, like, in May, it rains, so you just don't know what the weather's going to be.
But you're not talking about, like, losing the whole summer.
No, we're not, no, absolutely not. So, I think we could get this done by early June. But then we just, the dynamics of, like, we have camp, we have all these things, we just, the logistical things we got to look at. Our plan right now is to do this as soon as the season's over. So, our revenue plan over ten years will involve private donations, which we, we have secured. We have one up there right now, but we've secured another one. And then we have a great relationship with Adult League, the men's Adult League that uses our fields twice a week. They've been doing that for twelve years that I've been here, and they do a phenomenal job. And like I said, we have such a great relationship, they're willing to donate five thousand dollars for four years, so giving us a total of twenty thousand, including the annual revenue stream that we'll make renting out the fields. And then also, field rentals. With turf, with, with getting turf, we can add more tournaments, so we can, we can have a tournament every weekend, basically, in the summer, so you're talking June through August, September, and that's where we came up with the twenty-four thousand dollar number, and we've communicated with these tournaments and given them our pricing and things like that, and our diamond club has added everything up, and that's what it comes to. And then also, our other field rentals that we do, that we've been doing for twelve years since I've been here. And then donations to the diamond club that would just be more specific, like, if families wanted to donate to the project. If anybody in the community wanted to donate, that's where that fits into that part of it. The ten-year fundraising plan is to pay off the original turf and then also provide replacement, cost for replacement turf, which is, they say, every ten to twelve years, so I'm, we're thinking more ten. And then the remaining balance, and, and I'll get to this in the next slide, but the remaining balance after ten years would be two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, and then that would provide us with the money and the cost for the estimated turf cost of a hundred and seventy-five thousand. That'll make more sense when I show you the next slide. So, this is what, you know, Mr. Gordon and our, our booster club, and we've, over the last couple months, this is the organizational part of, of what we've tried to do to make this as organized as possible, but also, like I said at the beginning, we want to make sure we execute, execute the plan. So, I'm going to talk about primarily the two columns, the first two columns, the two thousand twenty-three and the two thousand twenty-four. The two thousand twenty-five through two thousand thirty-three, that's a repetitive, that's, that's what we're projecting every single year. So, I don't want to waste your time on that because it's the same thing over every single year. But what I want, want to tell you is, in two thousand twenty-three, so where we're at currently, our diamond club has donated sixty thousand dollars just earmarked for this program. So, this is the, the donations that we've already received and also fundraising that we've done, maybe over the last year, two years, that, again, we've earmarked for this. The Adult League, that we have a really good relationship, has given us an additional twelve thousand dollar donation. So, that gives us, right now, we have seventy-two thousand dollars in our account for this project. Then you throw in the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan that we got approved. So, that's right where we're at right now. Two thousand twenty-four, so that's when we install the turf in early summer. I really, this is the nuts and bolts, the two thousand twenty-four column, and I want to explain what each one of these, the money items and, and what it means and how we get there. So, the two, the twenty-five thousand that we're going to raise annually is the OHS Diamond Club donation, and that's a projected goal, and that's coming from family donations, and that's coming from donors. So, this year, we've raised, just in donations, twenty-seven thousand dollars, just off of two private donors within our program, and it's all anonymous. Like, I don't know who these people are. We actually did a poll within our program that our boosters have, that they don't have the names. It's just anonymous. But it was, the question was, would you be willing to donate to this turf project? It's zero player fee. It's, it's just donations, and seventy percent of our families were like, yeah, we would absolutely donate. So, that's where we're getting this twenty-five thousand dollars per year, is off of family donations and off of donations that we would get in the community or whatever. The five thousand that's just below it, that's from the Adult League that we're going to get over, that we're going to generate over the next four years. And then the twenty-four thousand dollar number is the new tournaments that I talked about. So, this is, we're going to be able to rent out our facility because we have turf and there's low maintenance. We can do that. We can do this every single weekend, and then we can generate $24,000 more dollars every single year. And then the $13,000 number is what we've done in the past, and we'll continue to have relationships with. It's like our feeder programs. They use both our fields, and they rent it out, and they rent out the facility. All that stuff goes towards our program. So that's what we've been doing the last 12 years. So that's where all the money comes from, and then it adds up. And then over the course of the year, as you can see each column, we obviously get a surplus. And because of that, that's where we get, in the bottom right-hand corner that's highlighted, that's where we get to the $227,000 over a 10-year period, that we would be, that's our ending balance. So that money would provide us the opportunity to do the turf replacement. Okay? So I'll go back. This is our 10-year plan. We, I mean, we're in talks with a couple of different companies. Our goal is, we want to get some private donors that can give us some big-time money, that maybe it's some naming rights, we get plaques, we do all those recognition-type things, that we could pay this off in three to five years. That's our aggressive role. But we do have a 10-year plan, and that's what it is.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
The replacement cost of $175, you estimate, is that in today's dollars, or is that inflation?
That's what we talked about with Levance and AstroTurf, and I mean, they said it would be around $175,000.
Even 10 years from now, they.
Even 10 years from now. But then, what I love is that we have $227,000 that we're projected to make. So if it is more, we, and then we would fundraise, or we would do whatever we got to do.
The costs you can adjust. I mean, the tournaments, you can adjust.
Sure, sure. But they did give us, we asked that question, and they said, yes, it would be projected 10 years from now.
You just got to remember, the cost for a place is always cheaper, because you don't have to do as much site work.
Correct, yeah.
The initial install, a lot of site work that drives the original cost up, then upon a replacement, it's just laying new turf. So even if the cost of turf goes up, you don't have to, you don't have, there's still some site work, but you don't have as much site work as.
And any surplus we have, after we do the replacement, we just earmark that towards like whatever project we're going to do next. We want to build an indoor facility, things like that. That would be where that would go towards. Any other questions on this? Or do you want me to?
Turf in the infield, outfield?
We're just turfing the infield and the bullpens. So it's, I think it's like $900,000 to do the whole, like I'm in the wrong business. That's what I meant. Yeah, it's pretty expensive.
Mr. O'Brien, are we doing questions?
Yeah.
The question slide did not come up, so I wasn't.
I have two more slides, but if you guys want to, yeah, I'll be quick. Literally, it's the last. So this is, we call it the backup plan, but it's really just our organizational structure of our Diamond Club. It's just, so we have our capital funds, and we have our operating budget funds, and we just split it in two. So our capital funds, our donors, field rentals, things like that, it pays for any project that we want to do in the facility. So turf, turf in the baseball field, that's what that money's earmarked for, that's what it's for. Then we also have our operating budget, where we fundraise throughout the year. We do a golf outing, we do a mattress sale, everybody laughs about the mattress sale. But if you want a mattress, if you need a mattress, I can hook you up with a pretty good price. But we make really good money off of it, and it's a one-day deal. And then our program camps as well. So that money off to the side with our operating budget, it helps with equipments, spring trips, uniforms, things like that. I will add, our Diamond Club, who's phenomenal, our booster people are really, really good. In my 12 years, we've never had a player or a family pay for a spring trip. So our boosters pay for them to go on a spring trip. The only thing our families ever pay for is board approved, the pay-to-play, and then just like every team has a player package where it's a hoodie or a hat, or, you know, things like that. So it's a minimal fee, and that's what our parents pay for. Everything else, our boosters pay for all of it. And it's because our families work so hard together to fundraise, we want to make sure that they don't have to deep reach in their pockets. Now, like I said, we asked them if they wanted to donate, like towards this project, would they be willing? And like I said, 70% of them said, absolutely, we'll write a check, we'll do whatever. And with that being said, I've told our boosters, like, I'm the coach, I'm never going to get involved in that, because you start getting in that area. Like, I'm never going to know who did what, things like that, because then it becomes, well, coaches only play on them for this and what. That's never going to happen in our program. So I wanted to say that. So other than that, that is all I have. Do we have any questions?
Maybe before we go to questions, and you referred to it a little bit, so this kind of booster-funded model, you know, Jeff and his team has done a really good job. If you go back, this is, I was trying to count in my head, we had three football fields, baseball at Orange and Liberty. Do we softball at Liberty too?
Softball, yeah, Liberty.
Yeah, yep.
So we're approaching our ninth, eighth, ninth time we've kind of adopted this model with not a single default.
Yeah.
Right? And so, it's kind of time-tested. And no one wants to be the first, I'm sure you don't want to be the first. But it's something we've got a demonstrated history of being able to successfully achieve.
Yeah. And I'll say this, that, you know, in my 12 years, we've always fiscally been responsible, our Diamond Club boosters. We've never missed a payment or anything like that. We also had, I think it was my third year, fourth year, we built a press box, and that was an $80,000 structure. So we went down this road, and we paid that off, and there was never issues with that. So, we have history that we are fiscally responsible.
So, following up on that, and I'm not trying to sound mean here, so don't take it this way, the great intro, right? Things go south with the economy, all these projections dry up, everybody's, you know, scrambling economically. It's another worldwide depression. We're not on the hook as a school district for this, correct?
This is a Diamond Club-funded project.
So even if your note goes south, we're not on the hook?
Correct, you are not on the hook. Yep.
And I'm not anticipating that. I'm buying long. Anyway, the next question is just kind of a clarification for folks. This isn't just a high school thing. This is a culture-changing of baseball. Little kids will use this field, tournaments will use this field, people will come all over the place to use this field, because it is a premier opportunity to play on a great space. Is that fair?
Yeah, fair. And we have, we pride ourselves on the relationship we have with our feeder programs. I mean, that's what makes programs really successful at the high school level, and it just promotes that. It's going to allow us more opportunities to get our young kids on the field, and us working with them and doing things like that, so.
And you're talking about, like, rainouts suddenly disappear. You can play five minutes after it's rained, so.
And my wife's going to like this, because I, she, I love fieldwork. And she's like, why didn't you come home like four hours ago? Well, sometimes I'm always like, well, I was raking the mound. I wasn't raking the mound. So now I don't have, I come up with a different excuse of why I'm not coming home. But we can figure that out. I'm sure turf has maintenance that I need to. I can edge something at this facility. I know I can.
Thank you for your leadership. It's a big deal that this opportunity is available, so thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I have a question, but I don't know that it's so much for you, Mr. Lucas. I don't know, I'm just throwing it out here, if anybody wants to chime in on this. We recently named Elementary 17, and we had to adhere to policy in the naming conventions. So I just, when you were talking about, you know, securing maybe corporate sponsors or large donors and, you know, naming rights to that end, it just kind of tripped my trigger here a little bit to ask, you know, what would that process look like, or who? What does that look like? Because I can only assume you can't just slap a name on a facility. Am I?
Well, to answer that from my end, we've talked about it as a Diamond Club, because we've wanted to do these things before. We would actually, we, obviously, we would get with building leadership, our athletic director, but then also people here at central office. Mr. Gordon would be probably the first phone call I make and just figure that part of it out and what that looks like. I don't know the answer to your question, but those are things that we've talked about.
So, yeah, there would have to be a lot of detail in naming anything within our street facility. So, corporate sponsors as far as signage and advertising that.
And I'm talking, I said naming rights, but I'm talking more like, like we have areas at our field where we can do plaques, and we can do a recognition of, you donated this amount of money. So I say naming rights, I shouldn't have, because I'm standing up here doing this. But, like, that's what it would look like. It really would look like. And we have a really cool paver plaque area that you stand on when you walk up, and it's an alumni-based thing, but we also have corporate sponsors. So we've talked about things like making it look like a baseball, or like, as they're walking up, you go to the concession stand, you're walking on the sponsorship plaques. So it would be more geared that way.
Cool. How's it?
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you guys for your time. I really appreciate it.
Okay, our last presentation item is Energy Manager Program. Mr. Gordon?
Yes, I just want to say, as Mr. Lucas is leaving, I really enjoy working with these programs. Our coaches and our boosters spend so much time raising the funds and putting the time in. And it's great to get to meet many of them, who I don't necessarily always interact with, but the hours they spend coaching and then doing these projects, it really, really is great for the kids, great for the district. Energy Initiative 2023. So, I just want to say, starting off with this program, we're going to change it after this year. So this is going to be, we're going to shorten it a little bit going forward. But we have used our base year in 2013 was our base year. We've built several buildings since, starting with Berlin High School and others. So we have always made our comparisons using those same buildings that we had in 2013 when we started. Not that we aren't watching energy consumption in those buildings and doing the same methods there, we just haven't included them in our comparison. So going forward, we're going to change our base year. The second part of the presentation has been the last several years, the Energy House Bill Project, which is coming to an end as far as the, we're out of the guarantee period though. So we're going to, last, this will be the last year we report on that, but then we're going to create a new base year with our new buildings. So going forward, we'll start reporting from probably 2020, well, you'll see why not 2020, probably 2021, and then comparing going forward with all of our buildings. So I just wanted to note that, that it's going to change going forward. But we've had some success, as you'll see here from 2014, from our base year. So we have currently saved to date, or cost-avoided, the $11 million on the electric side, which is the big one, where we can get the most bang for our buck with our initiatives and really watching when the buildings are running, what we're doing, what our temperatures are. And remember, our goal is not to impact the student day. We have parameters that we set, arrange during the day that's comfortable for most people. It's when we operate outside of those hours, outside of the student hours. You know, when we're running at four o'clock or midnight, you know, our chiller's kicking on for some reason. We're trying to watch all of those things, but not impact the student day with our program. So overall, since the inception, as a whole, we've avoided about $13 million costs that we would have paid had we run the same way we were running in 2013 and used the same consumption. And that's taken the annual consumption, savings of consumption, and multiplying that times the cost of the energy in each of those years.
Have you figured out the equipment cost? Because running the chillers last, things like that, it's going to save that too. Do we have even a rough?
We don't have a cost. We know that it saves us money. It's hard to, you know, it's hard to capture that, that information, because you don't know the chiller. You know, we've had domestic hot water boilers that are supposed to last 15 years, that have lasted five. So it's hard to put a number on that, because you don't know, you know, what's made them last longer or what hasn't. We know that we've, we've saved life on equipment, because we are running it less. The other things that we've done is, when we look at these, our meters, we'll see spikes. I've used the example before that we had a spike at Freedom Trail Elementary School, and it kept jumping up all night long. It'd go up, down, up, down, up, down. And we caught it fairly soon, and it was the booster heater for the dishwasher. Well, water wasn't running through that. So by that spiking, you know, we knew that was kicking on, we were able to go track that down. We started looking, found that, and then corrected the issue. So that, after a couple of weeks, had we let that go, would have burned itself out and would have been cost. So those type of things, we know we're saving money there, we're extending life, but it's hard to capture what the cost, what the value of that is. But that's definitely an advantage of having the meters. Just real quick, I'll show you, just you can see the jump down from 2013, coming down in 2020 and 2021. You'll see this on this slide and the next slide, they're in a little bit darker green. And that is in 2020, when we went home for COVID, we kind of shut things down, so we had less energy use. And then in 2021, when we came back, we really opened things up, we ran more hours. We opened up and brought in more outside air. And when you bring in more outside air, and we'll talk about it, or you'll see it on the gas as well, is you're treating that air. So when we can recirculate air and monitor the CO2 and different things, and know that we're recirculating a quality air, we will do that with minimal outside air. 2020, 2021, we're bringing an extreme amount of outside air, which meant we had to heat that outside air, we had to cool that outside air, so more energy use. And you really see that reflected in that year. And then especially here in 2021, when we were doing that, you see it on the gas side. So the cold air we were bringing in to warm that up, because we're bringing so much outside air in the extremes.
If you looked at either the gas or the electric consumption, but then overlaid the amount of square footage covered, because along that path in 2019, 20, maybe not 2022, but you, we added buildings along the way.
Well, those buildings, again, that's what I was mentioning at the beginning, is right now, we're only including like buildings that we had in 2014.
So kind of same store sales.
This is the same, same square footage that we started with our base year going forward. So that's the same square footage.
Got it.
So, but you are correct, we would have seen a jump just based on square footage. But in order to do the comparison, and the reason we've waited so long to add those buildings in is the second part of the presentation, which is the House Bill. So, because we really needed to watch that guarantee period to make sure we were doing like-for-like. And I've shown you each year where our Energy Star scores are. You can see the district has performed well. Assuming that a 90 score is good, and I thought, well, maybe we need to put that in some context. So I added this slide here in lieu of the, where we've done the energy savings and the impact on the environment, just to give you an idea. So you can see, this is Heritage Elementary School. Heritage is the only building that is Energy Star certified, even though all of our buildings have a rating. Frank Eisenhower from our Facilities Committee went through the process to get one of our buildings certified, just to see it's, it's a lot of work, a long process. That's why we didn't ask him to do all 23, but we wanted to see where we would rank if we certified one, and that was Heritage. And the rest of our buildings operate similar to Heritage, so you see similar results. But what this does, and the reason I'm comparing this, is 96 out of 100. So this means that we are better than 50, 50 is what they say. Take like buildings and they create the model zero to 100. So we are better than 96%, or 96 percentile of other buildings like ours, that are school buildings of similar size, similar students. And so that's how we're performing against other, other school buildings across the country. And that's, jumping back to this slide, that's where you see the 92 as a district. So overall, this is comparing our buildings to like buildings across the country, and you can see we're performing very well with our energy.
What accounts for, sorry, I mean, I realize 2020 is a little different, but what sort of accounts from going 97 and 2017 and 92 now?
Well, that is our goal, is to dive into those. And that's with our meters, is to really go building by building and see where that difference is. But you see in 2020, we hit our peak, and then we hit 2021, and we just looked at those graphs where the impact was of running the buildings more. 2022, some of that. So now we're working our way back up. But we, while we're not running at the capacity we were at 2020 and 2021, we still have tweaked our parameters a little bit to still continue to bring in a little bit more outside air. So we're going to have to tighten some other parameters to try to work our way back up. And this, by the way, these scores are district-wide, so this does include those buildings that we've added on. So some of the newer buildings come on as well. That first year don't operate as efficiently as we start work, as we work through the bugs. And our, some of those buildings as well, with our energy use during construction, are, that, some of that data gets fed in. House Bill 264, and I'll quickly go through this. Just a reminder, the project, we changed all, it was part of a loan to change out, we changed all of our exterior lighting, interior lighting, of replacement mechanical equipment. We avoided the cost through PI of replacing two chillers, two boilers, two air handler units. And then all of the district controls across that had been aging, and that also allowed us to unify those into one program, which helped us with the different staff members knowing how to use them and being consistent with how we use them. The total project cost, 7.2 million. We were able to get rebates of $957,000 back from our, from our utility companies, which was huge, because that saved us, decreased our loan amount. So to date, or to the fiscal year 21, our total cost avoided was $5 million, and our total interest and principal paid to date was $4 million. So you can see there that we've got a delta of a million, over a million dollars that we've saved versus our cost to put that in. And again, that's our savings in our payments and cost of the program. In addition to that is the money we didn't spend on the mechanical equipment. Guarantee period, remember with this was a guarantee that we had to see results that would, which guaranteed that we saved money and the program paid for itself. The first year, we saw success with that, and as a reminder of what we do, the company that did the program can do. So if we run outside of specific parameters, like in the years of 20- years of 2020 and 2021, when we ran more peak times, the parameter setup was to shut the buildings off at four o'clock, when we ran to six o'clock or eight o'clock, that company could offset those from, against the guarantee. So I won't go into all of it, but you can see there, the operating equipment outside of specific hours, changes in size of light bulbs, fixtures, anything that we did. So they would track that, track our runtime, and then offset that. So electric and gas, our actual cost versus the target, the, on the left is our actual use, once you do those offsets, is on the far right, adjusted, so there's extra time that we ran. The yellow is the target, so you can see the blue to the right is below the target, as well as electric and gas costs from the whole program for the three years of the guarantee period. So over that three years, the company was, had to guarantee that we would see those savings, we did see those savings, once you adjusted for the offsets that were allowable in the program. So I see that ended in fiscal year 22. We continue to see success in fiscal year 23. And at this point, I don't plan to report on the energy project going forward, or the House Bill project, just will continue to do energy updates. With that, I know I went fairly quick, any, any questions?
Does the House, does 264 still exist for like new loans and new money?
It does, it's, it's been modified, and it now goes through the Ohio Facilities Commission, and they've kind of changed some of the parameters on how they do that and how companies can go through and choose that. They'll allow them to do it through cooperative purchasing and some other methods. So they've adjusted, since they've gone to OFCC, on how they do it. It does still exist, but in a different, a little bit different format.
Any other questions on that? No? Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, Superintendent's Report, Mr. Meyer.
All right, good evening. You know, first, I want to congratulate Mr. O'Brien and Dr. Wallach, and welcome Ms. Schreiber as our new board member, starting in January. So what really impressed me from election night was the number of votes and the interest that we had in the election. I was amazed at the number of votes that we had out. And again, it just, to me, it goes back to the community, and we've seen a lot of that tonight with the presentation from the baseball boosters and how parents and community members are so involved and how we partner with them, you know, within our schools, across our programs. And then Mr. Gordon was up here presenting, and the amount of work that we have from our Facilities Committee, so members of our community who volunteer hours of service to sit on that committee, and then off the committee that offer expertise for us as a school district, so it's just simply amazing and extremely thankful for the partnerships that we have throughout the community. So first want to highlight our quality profile. So the 23-24 quality profile will be hitting mailboxes this week. So you can see, arriving at over 51,000 residents this week. Extremely proud of what we accomplished, again, in the district, and we really frame this around our strategic priorities, so learning and organizational development, resource stewardship, students and stakeholders, and internal processes. So it really kind of gives the taxpayers a snapshot of the health of the school district and the great things that are going on in the school district. Also, I was just, wow. So the last couple of weeks, in honor of Veterans Day, all of our schools, they did so many things throughout the schools, throughout classrooms, to honor and recognize Veterans Day and the veterans who have served and currently serving in the armed forces and just, you know, whether it was a breakfast, whether it was, you saw the example from Oasis tonight with the Stars notes inviting veterans in to the building, to read, to share their stories with our students and staff, simply amazing. So kudos to all of our schools, principals, and staff and students for honoring, recognizing veterans over the last two weeks. Here's another recognition, so we had the Powell Area Realty Association donated $2,200 to support our student wellbeing and suicide prevention programs. So this is really good too, because again, you talk about community partners, so when they started thinking about what they were going to donate the money to, obviously, they donated it to our student, our Student Wellbeing Department. And so these funds will support four of Olentangie Student Wellbeing Staff on Becoming Certified and QPR, so Question, Persuade, and Refer. And that's a technique, you can see it up there, kind of, it's considered the CPR Training for Suicide Prevention. So what will, what will happen is our four staff members will be trained, but then they'll also be able to train hundreds of staff members across the district, really to know the right questions to ask. Persuade is to offer hope to an individual, and for sure, refer that person to the appropriate staff member who can help. So again, and we've done so much work and continue to do so much work with, around student wellbeing, so excited and thankful for that donation. Also, we continue with our Bridge Ed program, and I've reported in the past in doing tremendous work. Our Assistant Director, Mrs. Preston, is really doing a good job. So this is kind of the next phase of Bridge Ed, so we're doing State of the Workforce in all four of our high schools. And they, all four, were a little bit different in how they offered their students opportunities to meet with our partners. So, you know, Mrs. Preston's work, Mrs. Preston worked with the building principals on creating what that would look like. So we had those, so for example, at Liberty High School, students could sign up for the company. So typically in our high schools, like when a college announces they're coming to the high school, so like Miami University, if students were interested in Miami University, they would sign up through the guidance office. So that's how Liberty High School kind of ran. They would, they announced the companies were coming, and the students had the opportunity to sign up. At Berlin High School, they held a workforce fair where all students were invited to attend during the lunch period. And so specific courses, like all of the business teachers brought their classes with prepared questions to talk to the partners. At Orange High School, they had the entire junior class, so over 400 students, attend the workforce event in the auditorium where the students got to ask them questions, questions. And then at Olentangie High School, 115 students attended an event in the auditorium, so similar to that. So it was a smaller group, but, you know, obviously really engaged students with our partners. And again, continue to create a tremendous amount of awareness around what is actually out there, what these companies do and pathways, possible, or potential pathways for our students. You know, one example, and we talk a lot about the medical industry, where people think it's just doctors and nurses, and there are so many other jobs in the health profession. But Honda was another example, you know, kids think that it's a manufacturing plant, a car plant, they make cars, but there are so many other things that Honda does, just on the business side, like for example, marketing and finance. So, you know, it's good that we can continue to provide access and make our students aware of these opportunities. I got to say, this is probably my favorite thing as new superintendent, when I get invited into elementary classrooms. So on October 26th, I was invited to Heritage Elementary School, second, Ms. Schuler's second grade classroom. So I participated alongside Teacher Academy students, reading the book With Lots of Love, and this was for Read for the Record Day, which is the world's largest shared reading experience. So more than 26 million people participated in this year's Read for the Record. So I participated with the second grade class, and I love the elementary kids because they are so curious. They want to tell me all about them, they want to know all about me, they want to tell me all about their dogs, their moms, their dads, their brothers, and it's awesome. So then, last week, I visited preschool, the preschool classrooms at Shale Meadows, and read The Very Hungry Caterpillar, and they really had some really good, these preschool kids had some really good questions. And I did great, you can see me reading, but then there were some extra activities, and they wanted me to dance to Head, Shoulders, Knees, and Toes, and I could only go head, shoulders. I could not bend down to my toes. So they did a really good job with that, but I did not. So, and as we end our fall athletic, athletic seasons, again, just really, really good accomplishments from our students across our four high schools. So here, want to recognize Olentangie High School. Meadow finished sixth overall at the state girls golf tournament. Roman placed 118th at the state boys cross-country championship. Liberty High School, girls soccer, state runners, runner-ups this year. Boys golf placed third at the state, girls cross-country team seventh at the state. Julia finished 13th at the state girls cross-country championship. Orange High School, girls volleyball, state runner-ups. So we're getting real close to some of these state championships. You know, we were, we were, we do really well getting to the final four, now we're getting to the championship, so we're going to continue to work there. Skyler placed second overall at the state girls golf tournament, boys cross-country team placed third at the state. And then Saketh placed sixth, Matthew placed 17th, Braden 38th. And then we have Brooke and Maren O'Brien, I'll say her last name because yours is very proud. Papa placed 52nd at the state girls cross-country championship, and I think she had a personal best, you told me, right?
It was, so she, she moved up 30 spots from last year.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. And then Avery was a state girls tennis quarterfinalist. And that Berlin High School, so Grace placed 16th at the state girls cross-country meet. Soliel was a state girls tennis quarterfinalist. And I'll say, I will say, Grace is the daughter of our Arrowhead Elementary Principal Lauren Hightamp too, so I can say her last name. So extremely proud. Also want to update, so this is the fourth quarter, and I also want to update the board on the work that we've been doing across the district. So in October, proud to say I have completed my one-on-ones with all administrators across the district. So have been really, really good conversations with our approximately 150 administrators. So what I'm going to do is, I, I, there are common themes through the responses from our administrators, so I'm going to capture those themes, break it down in those four questions that I asked, and then work with our district leadership team around those responses. We worked to finalize the levy ask, which you guys approved the resolution to proceed. We began our district leadership staff meeting, so we are visiting every building to meet with our staffs, to talk about what's going on in the district, and to thank them for sure the work that they continue to do on a daily basis and what's coming in the future for the district. Continued community conversations with local government officials, so again, I'm meeting a lot of people within our different municipalities and meeting with them. Five-year forecasting staffing review and recommendations, that was completed in October. And then our curriculum building visits, so also our curriculum team is very intentional on visiting with our buildings around the curriculum initiatives and engaging feedback from our buildings relative to professional development happening. So here in November, we are starting the Peach Bowl Crossing internal staffing process, so we're going to start that first internally, and we'll see how, how many transfers we have from the other buildings for that staffing, for Peach Bowl Crossing, then we'll kind of move throughout the year as far as posting external and filling those positions at Peach Bowl Crossing.
About how many people do we have at an elementary school in terms of?
50, 50 plus, yeah. So we'll, we'll hire, we have the principal hired, so we'll work through administrative, we'll hire the secretary, the building secretary, will be an important position that we'll get hired first, and then we'll start working through certified and then the classified positions in the spring. You know, one thing I have next, develop a strategic communications philosophy and plan, we do a really, really good job, and you saw some of the data, as far as communicating across our different stakeholder groups, but we're getting so big. So we really want to take a look at our internal and external communications, all of the touchpoints, and how we can work on filling gaps within the plan where gaps exist, and how we can better communicate with all of our stakeholders. And it does become challenging, so it's something that we have to continue to look at, both internally and externally. So we're going to be working on that and then plan to bring that forward with a report from our Communications Department to the board. We initiated our key communicators network, so we held our first meeting a couple of weeks ago, which I thought went really, really well. We had, I think of the seven townships, six representatives from six of the seven townships here, as well as various stakeholders from across the district, so well attended. Finalized administrative center and mentoring program, so this is real important, as we continue to grow, and this comes down to communication, this comes down to induction, onboarding new administrators, but for sure administrators across the district, and providing a resource where they can get information on what we do in the district, across the district, within our departments. So we're going to, working on that. We have the framework done, and then we're going to finalize that. And then working on a mentoring program for administrators through Mr. Wright's office, working with Mrs. Brown and Mr. Smith, as far as creating that mentoring program for administrators and principals. Redefine goals and purpose of the Business Advisory Council. We held our first meeting last week, and Mrs. Preston did a phenomenal job of really engaging that group. You know, obviously, we're always going to provide information, but we want that to be an advisory group, where they're going to, we're going to engage input that for sure is going to help make us better in what we do in the district and the experiences we provide for kids. So again, well attended and a great meeting last week. And then another thing that, the completion of CIP meetings with principals, so alignment is critical in the district. So the academics team has worked with all of our, continues to work with all our building principals and completed those CIP meetings as far as continuous improvement plans at the building level aligned to the district. Moving forward, December, exciting, we're at the next meeting, so we will assign elementary attendance boundaries for the 24, 25 school year. As you know, there were two opportunities for the community to provide feedback at two forums. The committee met last night, and will prepare a final recommendation for me to look at, and then I'll present at the next board meeting, those attendance boundaries for 24, 25. Peach Bowl Crossing, we have the name, so now we're working on the brand process, so that will also be at the next board meeting where we will unveil the mascot for Peach Bowl Crossing. I did get a sneak peek, so I'm excited, it looks, I am excited. So I think that they've, they've done some really cool stuff as far as the committee and working with the Communications Department, and my hope is, and I think-
Under promise and over deliver.
Yeah, I think, I think people, I think, I think, I think people will be, but, you know. Another, this is another new initiative, you know, student voice is really important to me, and we heard that tonight with Mr. Lester asking the Oasis students a couple of questions, but we're going to create a superintendent-student advisory committee. So we're going to start that right in December before second semester, so we're working on finalizing the plans on the makeup of that committee across our schools, so what that'll look like, and then obviously, the goals and the purpose. So that will be December. We are also taking a deep look at all of our board and superintendent committees and then creating charters, so we, the board had a- we, the board had approved the charter for the Owletangie Wellbeing Board Committee. So Dr. Fede had that idea a few months ago about really looking at our committees and the purpose and creating those charters for all of our committees. So we're going to do that in December. And then in Mr. Gordon's office, too, we're going to do an internal audit of exterior facility needs. So again, as our buildings continue to age, Mr. Gordon does a really good job of canvassing the district, the district facilities, but also having conversations with our building administrators on those facility needs. And then we will start our winter staffing meetings with all principals going into next year. You know, one thing that we continue to do is, a couple of years ago, we implemented an intervention specialist only interview day in February. We're going to move that to December. We're going to start that in December, because again, intervention specialist for sure for our district has been the highest percentage of licensed teachers that we've hired the last couple of years. And it's not just Owletangie, it's across the state. So we're going to start that process earlier, and the HR department's been working collaboratively with pupil services to create that day, and obviously, the needs for hiring. Okay, so action items?
Before you jump here, on the superintendent student advisory committee, one thing I would ask is that you think about as you form that committee, how you can get some of that input from the students to the board?
Okay, yes.
Either an annual presentation, maybe a board liaison. I don't know what the answer is, but I would ask that there, you find a way to get that input and feedback to us as well?
Yeah, great, absolutely.
Mr. Meyer?
So we'll do that, yes.
I'll tell you, in the last, I don't know, 45 days, we've been in two situations where students provide insight that we have huge blind spots about. We saw one at the event at Liberty for the candidates' night.
Two girls, yeah.
I mean, their impassioned plea of helping, helping us be able to see different things going on in school. And then, of course, on our committee work, man, I think it's so great that you're going to have kids telling us more about what they need, so we can remove barriers to their learning. Curious what you have in mind for composition of these?
We're working through that. So we're obviously going to start at the high school level in students, and then we're going to see middle school, so we're going to work on that composition, on who's going to, and we may, obviously, this is going to be new, so we'll create the committee, we'll work through the committee, and then obviously, get feedback and continue to evaluate the effectiveness for sure. But the most important thing is we want student voice, so absolutely, and we'll be able to, and we will elevate information to the board. Here's another example, and I didn't have this up here, and I had it up here originally, but it's coming out of the curriculum department. So teachers, when they create new courses, so not create, but they recommend new courses that they want to teach. So Dr. Bourdage from the curriculum department created a student committee to look at those courses through the lens of students, to provide select focus groups. And she's had two meetings, and her report back to me has been amazing, as far as exactly what you're saying, the student input on these courses, and in particular, how they would view them, whether they think they'll be successful or not, or what they're missing.
I would definitely advocate, I know you always roll the dice getting younger perspectives. I have one, one of our neighbors who always gives his perspective about what we need to fix on his playground. So, but I, elementary students can be encouraged to advocate and to see the bigger picture of meeting needs. So not, you know, definitely give them an opportunity as well, I hope.
Yeah, okay. So we're working on that, and we'll finalize that, and then we're going to get that started, so.
I mean, what I'll say, and I agree with everything everybody said on this. I mean, we purposefully added students to the mental health committee, too. We've got, as Kevin referenced, a couple of our students graduated, we're going to repopulate it here when we start up in January. But really gave very thoughtful, you know, things there as well. And every time, you know, I'm not going to speak for everybody, but I'm 99.9% sure I'm speaking for everybody here. Every time I've spoken to one of our district students, I have been so incredibly impressed by the maturity and the thoughtfulness. And that translates into, you know, thoughtful suggestions. It's not like, oh, we need more vending machines and whatever, right?
Exactly.
It's the sort of stuff that we heard from the student tonight, and the student on the mental health committee talked about, you know, thinking about with high school students, how, what our testing schedule looks like when you've got a diversity of classes, and how students can get hit with a bunch of tests on a particular day.
Sure.
And so what that scheduling might look like, and whether there are ways to, I mean, it's really just, just incredibly helpful thing. So I applaud you for doing this. I completely agree. Like, let's continue to hear from them as a board, and let's all be thoughtful as we're going through this about, you know, ways that we can continue to encourage that, because we have just such incredibly, incredibly thoughtful students.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And, you know, the goal is, again, we want student voice. We want them to have the best experience they can in our schools, so elementary, middle school, and high school. And it is a large district, so we want to continue to hear about their experiences and how we can improve as a district. So, so excited about that, but yeah, absolutely. I'll be back to report more. One thing I do want to mention, too, because I had, we showed all the accomplishments from the fall sports, so at the next board meeting, I just want to make sure I will bring the performing arts accolades from the fall at the next board meeting. So we're, the communications department's currently collecting that data now, and then I'll have it at the next board meeting. Okay. So back to the action items. So administrative employment, Elizabeth Wagner as a social worker. So this replaces the resignation that we had, I think about a month ago. So this will bring us back to full capacity with social workers on what we have allocated in the forecast, which is 18. Two resignations for the purpose of retirement. So Karen Baker, library aide at Liberty Middle School, will be moving on. And then Teresa Sherman, administrative secretary in Mr. Gordon's office. That's not her, but Mrs. McDevitt, who, that's, yeah. She does a lot of work with Mrs. McDevitt, so, yeah. So we want to wish them the best in their retirements. We do have a few seniors for graduation. This is really the time where we have early graduates, so like at the semester. And for the most part, it's athletic, for athletic purposes, where they graduate early and they get an early start on their college career. So those will be on tonight. We have transfer, declare transportation as impractical again. And then we have quite a few items from the business department. So recommend approval of a resolution with Robertson Construction. So this is for the construction services, considered urgent in nature for a classroom expansion project at the academy. So this is the academy expansion project, and we really got to get started on that. So that will be ready for when we start school in the fall. Also, we have a resolution to participate in RFP process through the consortium, so through Metta Solutions, to obtain competitive pricing for natural gas. And this is really for natural gas with Columbia Gas, and Columbia Gas services about half of the buildings in our district. Recommend approval to award contract to Fanning Howey for architectural design for elementary 18 and 19. So we're going to start there, and then we plan on bringing back architectural design recommendation for high school five in the future. And then approval, recommending approval for CT consultants. You can see in the amount of 197,000 for off-site utility improvement work related to elementary 18. So the site work and the utility work that we need for elementary 18, and elementary 18 right now is planned to be on Bean Oller, so north sawmill, and then on Bean Oller. And then also agreement with Triad Architects, an amount of 64,000. So again, as our buildings continue to age, we're going to replace things within the buildings. So this is for window replacements in five of our buildings. So again, that'll be a big project, so we'll recommend an approval of an agreement with Triad Architects.
I know I asked about this a little bit earlier, but as we're talking about these buildings again, and you referenced the levy, you know, that we're coming up on, you said that elementary schools have about 50 staff members. What about middle and high school, roughly?
So on the size, I'll say roughly 70 to 80 plus in the middle school, and well over 100 staff members in the high schools. Our high schools are large, so well, you know, so some of them might have 150. But-
So as we're talking about, you know, the operating, I mean, the levy ask, and we'll talk about this more, but it's really broken up into the, you know, the buildings, the operating and the PI. And as we're talking about five buildings, you know, you've got 100 at a high school, 70, 80 at a middle school, and then 50, that's 250, 320, 330, you know, new staff members that we're looking at here to staff all of these buildings. I just want people to keep this in mind as we continue to have this discussion, that, you know, there's building costs, there's all this, but it's also-
Staffing.
A large amount of people that are, that we need to do this.
And staffing's a big part of it, however. So when we open new buildings, what happens is we redistribute our population, so we redistrict, so all of the new staff will not be new.
Sure, sure.
And so we'll work, like we're working through the process right now with Peach Blow Crossing. We'll have a lot of internal staff members move over there because the numbers shift. So we'll obviously do that with the additional buildings, but we will have additional staff members that we will have to hire, and we forecast, we've put in the forecast to allocate for elementary 18, 19, and high school five, because it's within the next five years.
So to Mr. Lester's point, and the levy ask covers that with, with new folks. And if that doesn't happen, then there's a different allocation that's not aligned with our mission. I mean, quite frankly, right? I mean, we can't really engage best, what we want, our first choice, right?
Correct.
Other things come into play.
Yeah, because we'll, we'll increase class sizes. We're going to have a lot more kids in classes, and we're going to have to make some decisions on, for example, what we're doing at Cheshire Elementary with modular classrooms outside the school. So those are things that we'll have to face without additional buildings.
Sorry, go ahead.
Which is part of what we heard from Izzy, too, right?
From-
From Izzy, the student that spoke earlier, right, is having that individualized attention and being able to do it. So it's all part of a larger puzzle.
Yes. And as a former, former principal, 100% agree with what she said. You know, and this is a personal opinion, but sometimes schools can become too big.
Yeah, right.
And, yeah. Okay, great questions. So important dates coming up. So Classified Interview Day, Tuesday, November 21st. Always want to put a plug in there, because we're always hiring classified staff members. Conference Exchange Day, no school, Wednesday, November 2nd, so the day before Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving break, Thursday, November 23rd, and Friday, November 24th. Professional Development Day will be the Monday after Thanksgiving, November 27th, so no school for students. Next board meeting, Tuesday, December 12th at 6:30 PM. And since I have Thanksgiving up there, just want to take an opportunity again to thank all of you for your service, and our wonderful staff for what they do each and every day. And for sure, I mentioned our community. We really live in a special place, and, you know, want to thank all of you, and all of our staff, and all of our community members for helping make that happen.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
Absolutely.
All right, Mr. Jenkins, the treasures report.
Good evening, board members. I, too, would like to thank and congratulate board members who are being re-elected, newly elected, but also, depending on how fast they go, potentially one more meeting. Dr. Wise, thank you very much for your service to the Owletangie schools. You do have to come back in December, we're counting on it. But thank you very much for what you've done, and congratulations to Mr. O'Brien, Dr. Wallach, and welcome aboard Ms. Schreiber soon. So thank you all. I have just a few brief items tonight, but I really want to concentrate on the one resolution that we're asking to approve that is probably a little bit different than what we're used to. And there is a recommendation tonight for the Board of Education to approve a resolution that goes to the county auditor, asking for our debt service millage to be dropped from seven and a half to six and three-quarter mills. So the backstory is that for calendar year 2022, the total valuation in our district was just a shade under $5.1 billion. That is the assessed value. And with a tax rate of seven and a half mills, we collected around $38.7 million to pay our required debt service. In 2023, one of the hot topics is what's going to end up happening with valuation increases. I have a range of between 22 and 30%, because we still don't know exactly where House Bill 187 is going to land. If we were done right now, as we normally are in most years, we do know that that increase is right at 30%. However, there is a bill that is currently, it's through the House, and it's waiting for committee assignment in the Senate. And what that bill would do would be to smooth and use a three-year average for valuations. That's why we have that 22%. Kind of done some analysis and think that even if there was a three-year smoothing, we're still going to be close to the 22% increase in valuation. Kind of an aside that we talked this week with a couple of legislators, and the Senate isn't going to concentrate so much on the smoothing with House Bill 187. What they're going to concentrate on potentially is the expansion of the homestead credit for our elderly. That is actually something I can get behind. I believe that that's probably long overdue. There are, some of our elderly folks are experiencing increases in their tax bills that in some cases could put them out of the homes that they're in. So that is where the Senate might be looking. It sounded like their, their bill won't match exactly what's in the House version, which obviously would require a conference committee to settle those differences. In our case, because of that increase, we're going to see valuations between roughly six and a quarter billion and six and a half billion. And so based on that, we believe that we can drop our millage from seven and a half to 6.75, which is a three-quarter of a mill reduction. And we're still going to collect between roughly 40 and 41 million dollars to pay our debt service, which I'm very pleased to say will clearly be enough to cover our debt service payments required by the district for its facilities. The obvious question that we've already been asked a couple of different times, why would you give up revenue? Why would you give up three-quarters of a mill of debt service collections? Why wouldn't you just turn around then and lower your ask on the 4.25 mills? And so this slide is the explanation that we do fund accounting in schools, and money must be used for the purpose that the levy was passed for. If we are assessing seven and a half mills for debt service collection, that is the only thing those seven and a half mills can be used for. We could not turn around and say, well, we have too much in debt service collections, so let's go ahead and pay some operating costs. Or we have too much in debt service collections, let's go ahead and pay for some PI expenses. So because of that, we are in a position to where having seven and a half mills would lead to collections that are ultimately too much for what we need to pay debt. We want to ask for what we need, and we really strive to ask for no more. So with that in mind, that's why we can recommend the passage of this resolution that would drop our debt service collections by three-quarters of a mill, and still give us what we need in order for us to pay our debt service. Community-wide, that's about a 4.7 to 4.9 million dollar reduction in taxes that we will be asking for from the Owletangie schools residents.
And my correct in understanding, with my fifth grade math skills, that's a 10% reduction in the millage, right?
That is a 10% reduction in debt service, or, yes, in debt service millage. That's exactly right.
So three-quarters, it's like, wow, three-quarters. 10% is a lot.
Yeah. And the next slide quantifies that. And the next slide quantifies that, uh, for individual homeowners. And what I've done with this slide is I have included the 12 and a half percent credit that we get from the state. Um, I've said this a few times, when homeowners, uh, in any area of the state of Ohio pay their tax bill, they're actually only paying about 87 and a half percent on any levy passed prior to November of 2013. Now, any levy passed after November of 13, they're paying the full bill. Uh, we have just a couple of levies that were passed after November of 13. So our effective percentage is right around 90%. Uh, but all of our debt service, um, is fully offset by 12 and a half percent. So that's why you see on $100,000, it's somewhere actually, the, the gross amount's around $26.50 some odd cents after the, um, reduction because of what's picked up by the state. It's $23 per $100,000 of value. And so that's why you see, uh, for the average home in Olin Tangi schools, between $400,000 and $500,000, that is an annual reduction of around $90 to $115 a year in taxes. Questions about that resolution?
I feel like you should have to wear like a mortarboard and robe and have like a white board up here during all this. I feel like I'm in class. This is great.
Well, it, it's hopefully, um, you know, we spend a lot of time and effort trying to help our community understand because it is very, very natural to assume that if my home value's going to go up 30%, oh, wow, is my tax bill going to go up 30%. And, uh, it, it's a very important item, and so I want to take the time, I appreciate that, Mr. Lester, to make sure our community knows that that's not the case.
No, and it's, it's all like, you know, like, because it's, I, you know, we hear a lot, we heard it when, when we were running, we heard it in this last election, so I go about the importance of transparency, right? Um, and we spend so much time, and I, I really want to commend you for all the work that you've done since you've come on here about really trying to explain what are sometimes very, you know, complex ideas and, and put them, um, in, in ways that the community can, can understand them and, and make it very approachable. But ultimately, what this shows is, we are trying to be the best stewards that we can be of community funds. And we're doing it not just as a, you know, we're making sure all the numbers are the, the right numbers. We're thinking proactively about it to try to do it and, and, you know, it, do it in, in the most effective way that we can. So I applaud the thoughtful, you know, work on this, um, and I hope people understand what this means is not just that we're trying to get tax relief for folks, but that we're trying to be as responsible and transparent as we possibly can be.
That's well said, and it's exactly the aim. I appreciate that. Uh, that's, that's what we're trying to do. Um, you know, we ask for what we need to operate and to, to do great things and to maximize, um, learning for every student. But, you know, where we have the opportunity to say that, you know, we've got the resources and we need to do that, and we can provide some relief, that's exactly what we're going to do. The other items are more routine. Um, so the meeting minutes from October 26th. Um, did the presentation last time of the five-year forecast, uh, so this is the second read and approval. Nothing has changed, um, no modifications, everything from the first read is exactly the same. Uh, donations, um, that were made, uh, very generous donation from Micro Center, um, just under $30,000 for cleaning supplies. Uh, Berlin High School stadium scoreboard lighting, uh, Olin Tangi Berlin Athletic Boosters, um, provided that as well. Uh, Orange High School, 104 large pumpkins, 144 gourds. That is an interesting donation. But there it is.
It's in the homecoming program.
Uh, yeah, Wine.Run Elementary Sound System from the Wine.Run PTO. Um, and then we saw earlier, uh, the $2,200 student well-being from the Powell Reelers Association. Uh, the resolution to roll back the mils by, uh, three-quarters of a mil. Uh, the updated FY 2024 appropriation resolution, um, the 2023 monthly financials for October, I should say 2023, not just 2023. Um, and those are the treasures' action items for your consideration and approval. Any questions?
Well, I'm going to jump in here. Mr. Lester beat me to the, beat me to this. I was waiting till you were done with your presentation, but anyway, I would like to express my gratitude as well for having a treasurer who has a background as an educator and clearly still has a passion for teaching and, and informing. Um, it, it actually, I was so thrilled, it came up recently, speaking to, uh, someone local who said, "Yeah, you know, my taxes, they were $11,000 last year, they're going up to $14,000." I was like, "That does not sound accurate." Not, it doesn't sound accurate. Well, I visited the, I visited the auditor's site. Hang on a minute. And be, truly because of the, the information that you've provided to all of us and even the videos that we're able to share, I was able to pull up the parcel number, share it, say, "No, your taxes are going up about 600 bucks." So still going up, but $600 is not the same as three grand. And to be able to then share the video and say, "Watch this and do me a favor and share it with everyone you know," uh, so that everyone can be informed, um, and fully understand what this looks like. So, uh, yes, a tremendous thank you to all that you do in keeping us educated.
Thank you, Dr. Wallach. Um, yeah, it, it is, uh, finances are not the most riveting topic in the world. Um, and it doesn't become relevant until usually something like that. You think, "Oh dear, my taxes are going to go up 35%." And so to be there in that moment, to show people that, you know, there's a little more to the story is, is exactly what we're here to do.
Although they probably said words other than "oh dear."
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Okay, the, excuse me. Next agenda is public participation. Do we have any?
Nothing.
All right. All right. Dr. Fenny. So we've got two discussion items.
Yes. Good evening. So, uh, first, we have, um, our second reading of policy update number two, um, which is the zeros through the 4,000s, um, which we'll be asked to approve later, uh, in a moment. And then we have the first reading of update number three, which is the remainder of our audit, 5,000s through 9,000s. Um, the, those policies we'll ask you to approve at the December, uh, board meeting. Did you have any questions on any of those policies that I could address for you?
Again, we were provided redline versions in our pre-read.
You have been provided those, yes.
Could you just speak to, I know that there were a couple of policies that we had in the original, in the first reading of them, that we decided to modify or to, to not change.
So there were two policies, um, in, um, update number two that were in the first reading that we've removed for the second reading upon feedback from our, our teachers, um, or staff, uh, that reviewed the policies during the reading period. Um, they were policies related to multi, multicultural education and diversity, and the two policies are not Neola templates. So, uh, part of the audit process that we're going through is to, um, put our board policies on the Neola template as much as possible so that we can get maximum benefit from the Neola Policy Service. When any time, uh, a court case occurs or a law is made that would impact those policies, the Neola Service can then alert us to changes. Um, so we want to stay on that as much as possible. There were a couple, um, policies that were previous, that were board policies prior to Neola, um, so prior to 2011, that, uh, we had recommended for, to be rescinded. And then after we heard back from our staff, um, we found that those policies were of value, um, to some staff members. There are board position statements on the value of multicultural education and non-discrimination in the workplace. They were not unique policies in that regard. The Neola policies also address those topics, but the way they were written were of value to, uh, staff members in terms of to know the board's very clear stance on those topics. Um, so in consultation with, uh, our policy committee, we have decided to remove those from being rescinded. They're just going to remain as is, um, in, uh, their current state.
And so just a, a couple of things on that. One, um, I'm, uh, incredibly enthused, enthused is not the right word. I'm, I'm incredibly appreciative of our staff for reading these policies, right? This is what impacts on, on a day-to-day basis, and sometimes it's difficult, um, and not always the most interesting thing in the world to read policies, but we have staff that are out there doing it of their own accord and felt empowered to, to bring that up to us. So I'm really appreciative of those staff. Second of all, the policies that we're keeping in, you know, I think Jack's point is a really important one, that we want to be careful that we don't have policies that the law changes and we get out of touch with the law, and that creates problems down the line, right? So that's the whole idea behind this of staying current with the law. But these ones, they're not really tracking the law in a way that we're worried that they're, they're going to get outdated, it was just more that they were a bit redundant. It's not that we didn't view non-discrimination as important, it's not that we didn't view multicultural, you know, education as important, it's just that they, they were addressed in other places. But to the extent that they have value and meaning and they're not going to create legal liability, you know, our recommendation was that they, they stay in based on the very thoughtful, um, comments of our staff. So I, I think it's, it's really, you know, demonstrating a, a really robust, you know, thoughtful policy process. So I just wanted to highlight that.
Yeah. And I've already, actually, today I received my first question about update number three already, once the agenda had been posted from a staff member who had reviewed them. Um, so there is, there are some in the crowd who think that these binders are full of blank papers, but, um, you know, we do, uh, there is a robust process that we follow. And I am very appreciative of the staff members who take that time as well.
Speaking of that process, can you just do a quick overview of, I mean, do, do you guys meet in one of the, one of the clandestine rooms at, uh, central office and decide this on your own, based on your own political machinations? Or is this an open process? Um, how, how does this all work?
Yep. So our policy committee is a board committee, so it's a very open process. So, uh, it starts with administrators. Um, I distribute policies to the appropriate administrators. People sitting over here are used to getting handed a folder of policies relevant to them. Um, and they review them with their staff. Uh, they consult whatever resources are appropriate for each given policy. They make recommendations that then become redline recommendations that go to our policy committee. Policy committee is a, we post those meetings in advance, we post the agenda, um, we welcome visitors. We then discuss each policy that is proposed. Um, the policy committee makes further recommendations, um, either agreeing with, disagreeing with, or, um, simply offering changes that could add to clarification, um, for the reader of the policy to know, you know, exactly what it is intended to mean. Um, and then once the policy committee has done their work, we bring it back to the board for a first reading, which typically, you know, depending on the cadence of board meetings, is two to six weeks, um, of public, uh, reading, which is, again, not even required by, um, by any law, but it's something that we do in our, in the interest of transparency. Um, and, uh, then ultimately gets approved, uh, by the board.
And who can give you feedback about policies? Is there any?
Anyone, literally anyone. So, um, we've, I've, I've received feedback from residents, teachers, um, occasionally a student will, uh, ask about a policy and then offer feedback. I don't think that they're, I haven't had, I'm not aware of a student proactively reading them yet, but, um, they certainly do come up, and even outside of the district, people have weighed in at times. And, uh, again, uh, very, very grateful to our policy committee who spends the, uh, time truly digging into these policies and looking from every angle. They're a, they're a committee of experts in their own right, um, in the, you know, whether they're lawyers or HR professionals outside of education, but they add a lot of value to really try and make these policies, um, useful, which is what the purpose of policy is.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Fenny.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now go to the board action items. So, uh, could I have a motion, uh, to recommend board action item A, which is the approval of the number two board policy updates that Mr. Fenny just referenced?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the board action item? All right, seeing none, Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabrico?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Jenkins, you want to present the treasure action items, please?
So treasure action items A through F are there for your approval?
Including the .75 mils rollback?
Yes.
Okay, could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, please call the roll. Mr. Jenkins?
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabrico?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
All right, I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
The only discussion on the adjournment is our next meeting, as Mr. Meyer referenced, is 12:12 at 6:30.
Which is a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, it's a different day because we had a schedule change.
Dr. Dabrico?
Well, some of us had a schedule.
My fault.
I, I, yes.
Please call the roll. Please call the roll.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.